And a pledge, and it's being led by a pastor from Cornerstone Fellowship, Dick Metz.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we are so privileged to stand in your presence. You make all the difference in our world. Without you, we're nothing. With you, Lord, your will is our desire. Come, Lord Jesus, come Holy Spirit, and visit with us even as we meet tonight. Thank you, thank you, Father, for being very much involved in all of our lives. Thank you for leading us and guiding us. Lord, we ask for your wisdom for the school system here in Central. We thank you for all the students, Father. Touch them. We pray for the families whose whose boys and girls were involved in the accidents Saturday night. Lord, bless them, heal them. God, we ask that you grant forgiveness for the man that was in the other car. Lord, we ask that you direct the steps of Dr. Jason Fountain, all the school board members, Father God, the many administrators, coaches, teachers. Be with the students. Grant wisdom for tonight's business. And we thank you for that in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's see. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the Constitution, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every feet and hand this bow.
Thank you so much, Pastor Metz. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And we'll have Tracy handle the roll call for us, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Lee Hart? Dr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Hooper?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. This part of the meeting is going to be recognitions, and this will be handled by Dr. Jason Fountain.
So we are very excited to do a couple of recognitions tonight. First of all, Central High School's internship program is a partnership with our community businesses. By employing our seniors, these companies gain exposure to young talent, and our students gain exposure to the real-world workforce. Our students are able to apply their classroom learning in a professional setting and can establish critical networking connections all while still in school. We would like to recognize these students for completing the year-long internship program under the supervision of Dawn Smith with Career Compass. So what I'm gonna do is just go through the list. I'm gonna call them out, and if they sort of their manager, who is overseeing their internship as well. So I would ask y'all to come up to the front, and then we'll get a picture, and we'll also recognize everyone once you come up. So I'm gonna go through these. Some of these students are not here. I knew they wouldn't attend, but I wanted to go through this and just call them out anyway, because we're very proud of the internship program. This is a great opportunity as well for some businesses in the community to, you know, reach out to the high school, try to add some internship programs, give our students a great experience in the community. So first, Kimberly Alvarado Malina. Is she here? You can come on up. She has been at Central Intermediate School. And I think Ms. Dee Dee LaQuinn has been her supervisor, who is perfect. She's amazing. So I know you've learned a lot. So hang tight, we're gonna bring everybody up. Okay, next we have Ms. Loida Martinez. She is at Tanglewood Elementary. And her, I guess, managing person is Ms. Megan Brown, who's the principal. They're having an art show tonight down there at Tanglewood, so she's not here either. So next we have Ms. Jenna Glishman. Come on up. She is doing her work at Automatic Access Gates, and the manager is Tina Glishman. And she's, and you can come on up as well, since you're here. Thank you for hosting an intern. So next we have Rance Keller. Not sure if he was gonna make it. Working at Jerry Lee's, and the manager was Andy Burrell. Next we have Ben Williams. Think he was gonna be here, but he may not have made it. At Tricare, and the manager is either Shelby or Luke. Thought they were coming, but they must not have made it. Next we have Ms. Shelby Went. Central Pharmacy, and the manager's Colin Stagg. So thank you for that. And next we have Ms. Carly Minor. She is at Bellingrath Hills Elementary School with Ms. Erin Bonaventure. So I want to thank y'all. Hope it's been a great experience for you with these internships, and we hope to continue to grow this program. Let's give them a round of applause, and then let's get. Okay, we also have another award, and Ms. Barbara Guyan was going to present this, but she had to go out of town for a funeral. But the Association of School Business Officials presented a scholarship in the amount of $1,000 to Ms. Sidney Jones, who is a student at Central Community High School. Sidney, if you'll come on up. And this is in honor of Anya Bailey Randall, who was, she is a CFO in some district in the state, and she was given this award, and she was able to hand out these awards, I think $1,000 awards, to maybe 10 different students. So Sidney was one of those, and we're very proud of her. Congratulations.
Our next order of business is to consider approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting held on Monday, April the 17th, 2023, and take appropriate action. I will need a motion and a second. Thank you, Dr. Walker.
I second the motion.
Thank you so much, Ms. Norwood. Any discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the board? With no objection, that motion carries. Number seven, to receive the superintendent's report on personnel. Dr. Fountain.
So again, on this report, this is basically just a report, and there's no action that has to be taken. But I just wanted to read the retirements, just because they're retiring. And I think anytime someone retires from the school system that's really poured a lot of their life and blood into the school system, that, you know, we should honor that. We always at our crawfish boil, we do a better retirement recognition, and we have a special idea that we're working on for all of our retirees, the new ones and the ones who have already retired in the system. And we will announce that at our crawfish boil. But first, let me mention these retirements quickly. Ms. Carmen Beasley, Ms. Linda Crochet Primo, Ms. Leslie Cunningham, Ms. Cheryl DeVille, Ms. Tally Farsina, Ms. Kelly Jones, Ms. Donna Lee, or Margaret, as many of you probably know her, Mr. Randy Mitchell, and Mr. John O'Brien. It seems like I guessed them going out together as fitting, because they've been there a long time, for many years. And then finally, Ms. Randy Sartan, who is at Tanglewood. So those are our retirees. I did want to mention, we have, we have one report of an appointment, and he is here tonight, so I want to give him the opportunity for the board to meet him. His name is Mr. Thomas Dastazio, and he is the new Athletic Performance Enhancement Specialist. And really, this is, this is really a cutting-edge position. And whenever Coach Seminole came in, he wanted to have this position to work with all athletes, 6th through 12th grade, to put programs in place, to help grow our students, and, you know, help them reach their full potential. And Thomas is gonna do a great job with that. So he's here, and I want to give him just a second if he just wanted to say a word or something to. So first off, congratulations and welcome to Central.
Thank you.
Bring him.
No pressure.
Front and center.
I think the board may want you to put together a plan for each of them, but I know I would work that.
So just first off, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fountain. Appreciate all of you bringing me here onto Central School System. I think what you guys have here already in place is really fantastic, and there's a lot of opportunity. And I'm thrilled to be here. From what I've, I got here, let's see, this is gonna be a week that I've been able to just kind of take in and observe, coaches, students, teachers, everybody involved with Central. And there's a lot of buzz. There's a lot of excitement in the air. And the biggest thing that I've seen is, these kids are excited. They work hard, and they want to get better. So that's all I can ask for. I'm excited to get in there, dig in. The summer's gonna be a lot of fun. Maybe, maybe not so much for those hot dog days when we're out there on the field. But I think we've got a lot of, a lot of work to do, but a lot of exciting things on the horizon for us. So I'm thrilled to be a part of it.
Thank you, welcome.
The next order of business is number eight, to receive a report from the Human Resources and Policies Committee meeting held on Monday, April the 24th, 2023, and take appropriate action. And I'll turn that part of the meeting over to Ms. Norwood.
Good evening. The Human Resource and Policies Committee met on, you guys can read it up there, huh? I'm gonna change some words, though, so I'm not confused. On Monday, April 24th, 2023, and the report is as followed. A, the committee recommends approval of the following. Number one, an additional virtual school teacher at Central High School. Two, an additional special education teacher at Central High School. Three, an additional paraprofessional position at Central Intermediate School. And four, a new jobs for Americans graduate JAG specialist position at Central Middle School. Madam President, I so move.
Because this is coming out of committee, it's already been seconded. So if we have any questions from the audience? Any comments from the board? With no objection, those positions are, that, all of these things are carried.
B, the committee recommends approval of a new job description for the Athletic Performance Enhancement Specialist, who you guys just met. His position as presented by the staff. Madam President, I so move.
And again, it's the seconded already in committee, so any questions from the audience or statements, comments? Board? With no objection, that motion carries.
Madam President, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. The next order of business is to receive a report from the Finance Committee meeting held on Monday, April 24th, 2023, and take appropriate action regarding the following. And I will turn this part of the meeting over to Mr. Mike Hooper.
The Finance Committee met on Monday, April 24th, and reports the following. The committee recommends approval of funding for the positions that Ms. Norwood listed, the virtual student-teacher position at Central High School, an additional special education position at Central High School, and a paraprofessional position at Central Intermediate School. Madam President, I so move.
It's been seconded by committee. Any questions from the audience or comments? Then would you go to the mic, please, and identify who you are and tell your message?
Okay, my name is Jeffrey LaPore. My question is regarding the virtual school teacher. How long are we gonna continue to do the virtual school? Is that a new thing or temporary?
We actually started the virtual school back in 2017, I believe. So it was a thing even prior to COVID. Of course, COVID changed somewhat, and we had, you know, a large number of students involved in. But it has continued, because it does fill a niche for people. There, I think we had, of course, we went over all these numbers in committee. I think we have about 80 this year who are in the virtual school. So we do plan to continue with the virtual school, because it does fit a niche for certain kids who just seem to do better in that environment. We talked about this. We have a stringent process to get into it. You can't just decide to go to virtual. You have to go through an application process, where they look at your grades, your attendance, a number of items to, you know, in, in, in order to make a final determination on who can attend.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Any other comments? From the board? Any comments from the board? With no objection, that motion carries.
The Finance Committee recommends approval, approval of the 2022-2023 revised child nutrition budget as presented by staff. Madam President, I so move.
Again, seconded in committee, so any comments from the audience? Comments from the board? With no objection, that motion carries.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Number 10, to adopt a resolution establishing the millage rates for the 2023 tax rolls. Dr. Fountain.
So Madam President, as we do each year, the board must adopt a, the, the, the board must adopt a resolution establishing millage rates for the 2023 tax rolls. So this year, as we did last year, the board would be levying the following millages for the constitutional tax. It would be 3.91 mills. For the voter-approved tax, it would be 32.52 mills. And then for the general obligation bonds, they would be 23.65 mills. So the board would have to adopt this, and then we would have to do this by resolution.
Okay, we will need a second to that resolution, and then a roll call vote. Motion to approve. Motion to approve? Okay. I jumped ahead of that.
Yes.
Okay, second. Second, thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, we're going to have any discussion, comments from the audience? Any comments from the board?
The, if we look, those are the same numbers that we used last year, so there's been no changes.
Yes, these are the same numbers that the board adopted last year.
Any further comments? Tracy, would you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Those in favor of the resolution. Mr. Lee Hart?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hooper?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
All present in favor.
And the motion carried. Number 11, to consider a resolution relative to the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire and take appropriate action. Dr. Fountain.
So Madam President, the legislative auditor requires that a school board adopt a resolution approving the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire prior to an audit being completed. The staff has prepared a resolution and is providing our response to the questionnaire. So this is something that comes up each year. Barbara Guyan, our chief financial officer, completes that. It basically is asking questions such as, did we follow bid laws and things like that? And she fills that out. And then the board approves this. Every year, we have to do this.
Well, first, need a motion to approve from the board.
I make a motion to approve.
And second? Jason Lee Hart, seconded. Any comments from the audience? Comments from the board?
I have a comment or question.
Yes.
The board, and the staff, and the process of filling this out is going and saying, certifying to us that the board staff is, that these things haven't actually been done.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments, board? With no objection, that motion carries. We're gonna have a roll call vote on that as well. I forgot. Let's, Tracy, would you lead us in a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Roll call for the resolution. Mr. Lee Hart?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hooper?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
All present are in favor.
Thank you. We're gonna go on to number 12, to consider granting the staff permission to advertise for and receive bids for the additional parking lot at Central High School. Dr. Fountain.
So Madam President, we are asking for the board's permission to advertise for bids on a new parking lot at Central High School. We've been talking about this new parking lot for several months, and we've been waiting on our design documents to be completed. This new parking lot will be in addition to the South parking lot, and the parking lot will be next to the baseball field. This new lot will add, I think, 103 parking spots. This will allow us to remove the limestone parking lot in the back by the baseball locker room. This new parking lot will provide additional security for the campus as well as adding much-needed parking for events held in the new Commons area. If you've been to any events in the Commons area, whether a Friday night basketball game, or when they had the theater production, very difficult to park in that area. This is something that was actually in the original scope of the, of the Central High School renovations, but we had to pull it out just due to the money constraints. So as we went forward, we put this money in our capital-outlay budget. We estimate the parking lot cost approximately $500,000 to $550,000, which we have budgeted in our capital-outlay funds for quite some time. We've had this set aside since the summer, really, of a year ago. So we're asking your permission to put this out for bid. We have all the documents ready to go. We'll put it out for bid. Our hope is that we can have this completed for the start of school.
I need a motion to approve. Mr. Lee Hart, second. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any comments from the audience? Comments from the board?
Does the, does this include putting the parking lot in and removing the gravel as well? Or that, the gravel just later?
No, the gravel, we already have a bid, or prices on that. But no, this, this only, yeah, it's only the parking lot. Clearing the area, putting the parking lot in, fencing as well, which, I'll just go ahead and say this, part of the fencing is just chain link on the side of it between the baseball field and the parking lot. So we're putting in, I guess it's called an addendum, or whatever you call it. Okay, putting in an alternate for nicer, you know, the black fencing, kind of the rod iron fencing that we had, but that is not cheap. So our base bid would just be the parking and, you know, just, just, just a regular fence. But we're getting an alternate so that we can have the price of the nicer fencing, which would look better out there. So we'll see what the bid comes in. We've got to have a parking lot, and then we'll have to make a decision probably on the fencing.
Any further comments, board?
But I'll say this as well. The, the idea is that we're gonna kind of reclaim the gravel parking lot in the back. We'll sod it, so the band will have a place to practice. We'll have more room back there. It also, right now, when students park in the back, they have to walk through the back of the campus. There is an awning, but it just doesn't help us stay as secure as we'd like to. So we think with all this parking in the South parking lot, all the students will park there, and they will enter the building from that part. They're not walking in the back and so forth. Lot of positives about this.
Any further comments, board? With no objection, that motion carries. And number 13, to authorize the advertisement of a request for proposals for lawn care service. Dr. Fountain.
So Madam President, the staff is asking authorization from the board to advertise a request for proposals for our lawn care service. We attached the, the RFP to the board docs, I believe. So you can see it, basically, we put this out. It's, it's not, you know, like a low bid, is, it is the RFP, which means we're asking for proposals. So we can get those in, we can analyze them, we can choose the service that works best for us. It may or may not be the actual lowest cost, but we'll get that, and then we'll bring that back to the board. We'll go through it, we'll work through them, we'll look at the prices, we'll look at what they're offering, all those type things, and then we'll bring that back to the board to approve it. But we just have to have permission to put this out.
Okay, I need a motion to approve this. Thank you, Mike. Second, Mr. Lee Hart. Any comments from the audience? Board, any comments? With no objection, that motion carries. And we go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Fountain.
I've been talking entirely too much tonight. A couple of items, and of course, the board, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have on this. On April 19th, the, the State Department of Education held their annual Student of the Year finalist program. We had two finalists for the state, 8th grader Anna Bordelon and 12th grader Kayden Lane. They were each one of eight finalists in their respective categories. There are roughly 637,000 public school students in Louisiana. And for two of Central's students to be in the top eight is really amazing. And I told everybody that night, per capita, I think we have the most Student of the Year finalists than anybody. Of course, Anna's parents are Patrick and Kathleen Bordelon. They're both teachers in the system. And then Kayden's mother, Carrie Lane, is a teacher at our middle school as well. So we're proud of Anna and Kayden. We need to get them to a board meeting so we can pour more accolades on them. Of course, they were honored at our program, but we're just very proud of them. That was a very nice event. They did a great job, and they represented us so well. CHS Townsend Theater presented Disney's Newsies, April 27th through 30th. I hope some of y'all were able to make it. They had five shows over four days, and the production was the best I've seen in Central since I've been out here. The singing, the sound, the choreography, it truly was a next-level performance, is what I told a lot of people. So I just want to thank the amazing cast and the sponsors, Claire Klinkenbeere, Janice, not Janice, Janice Ludke, and then Ms. Bird, Mackenzie Bird, as well. So I actually was gonna try to get them to come and do a number tonight, which would have been awesome. But, but the high school scheduled their 9th through 11th grade awards night tonight, which we've already had a conversation about. Hopefully, next year, that won't happen on board night. But we are gonna try to come up with another way for them to perform for us. So really, really good performance. Students at CIS, CMS, and the high school have been taking LEAK 2025 tests. The high school has completed their testing. CIS will wrap it up this week, and then the middle school will finish their last test next week. So they kind of get spread out at different times. They're focused when they start. But we'll be wrapping that up very soon. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, so each school will be pampering their teachers. You'll probably see a lot on Facebook this week. We truly are blessed to have an amazing faculty and staff in our school system. We say it all the time, but the people make the difference. And we're so very thankful for our teachers and staff. So they'll be doing a lot of honoring this week. I was on a couple of schools sites today, and I actually saw a teacher post on Facebook this weekend that it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so if they're looking a little chalky by the end of the week, just mind your own business, is what they said. So, so we're excited about that. We've also begun utilizing the video board just right back here at the stadium. I don't know if you've noticed, but we're trying to, to put a lot of great things that are going on in the school system. We think it's the best billboard in Central. It's a great location. You, you just about have to see it when you come by. This week, I think we, we have our Teachers of the Year up there, and our Support Workers of the Year. But this is a great location for us to put things up, so we're gonna be doing more of that. There will be many awards day ceremonies taking place over the next two weeks. So I would just advise everyone to check their child's website, the school website, to make sure they have the dates, because there'll be a number of those coming up. Of course, graduation will be held on Wednesday, May the 17th, at Raising Cane's River Center. We love that venue. This will be the third year we've been down there, and it's really worked out well for us. Of course, it's hard to believe we're talking about this, but the last day of school for students will be Wednesday, May 24th. Tuesday and Wednesday, the 23rd and 24th are early dismissal days. So the last day for faculty and staff will be Friday, May 26th, when we'll celebrate the end of another great year with our 16th Annual Crawfish Boil. So the Crawfish Boil is a great way to kind of tie up the year, and we have a good time there. And finally, May committee meetings will be held on Monday, May 22nd at 5:15. This is a week earlier than normal due to the holiday on the 29th. So with those will be, again, on Monday, May 22nd. That's a week earlier than normal due to Memorial Day. And that concludes my report.
Dr. Fountain, if I may, I attended the theater production. I echo it was outstanding. Even if you don't want to think that, wonderful.
Yeah, it was very, very, very good.
Now, we, the next, the order of business are the announcements. We've already announced about the committee meetings. This is where we get the grunt of our work done. They last sometimes a very long time. But it's a great opportunity for people to come and give us your ideas and your comments, and we enjoy hearing from the community about that. May, Monday, May the 22nd. The next regular school board meeting will be held on Monday, June the 12th. And beginning next month, we're going to ask that anyone with an announcement to present it to the board president prior to the start of the meeting. And then the board president will make that announcement for you during the meeting. And this will help us to streamline that portion of the meeting. But because we haven't done that yet, are there any announcements of which I am not aware? No announcements? Done. You do that so well.